Okay. Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to welcome everybody to City Hall. Today is Tuesday, October 7, 2025. The time is 7:15. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council meeting. I'd like to convene the meeting, call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask Mayor Protem Roach if you can please do the pledge allegiance.
Gladly, thank you. Everybody, please stand if you're able.
Next is Madam City Clerk, if you can please take the role.
Thank you. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Vunia Junior.
President.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Sire.
Present.
Councilmember Sirmenu.
Present.
Mayor Salinas.
Present. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call upon our city attorney, and if you can please do our closed session announcements. There are two closed sessions, September 27, 2025, and October 7, 2025. And I don't know if I was supposed to say that, or you say that, but I said it.
Thank you, Mayor Salinas. The closed session on September 27, that was a Saturday, involved the council in a closed session, and I believe, Mayor, that the council took no reportable action. Is that correct? And the council met in closed session this evening and discussed two matters. Please refer to the closed session agenda. One was pending litigation, a case called Gali versus City of Hayward, and the second was a meeting with the council's labor negotiators. The council took no reportable action on those items. Thank you.
And yes, the council took no reportable action on September 27. Correct. Okay. Moving on to, we have a special presentation today. The City of Hayward officially kicks off Filipino-American Heritage, Filipino-American, I'm going to say it again, Filipino-American History Month. And I see we have groups that are here. We can give that a big round of applause, right? Filipino History Month, all right? We have the Hayward Public Library that is here. We have the Filipinex American Student Association, PASA, at California State University. Where are they at? Nice, okay, all right. We also have the HUSD Board of Education Representative. We have Board President Peter Buffete. Is President Buffete here? There he is, right over there. And what we'll do is, we do have a proclamation. I will read it, and then we'll all go down, I'll invite the council to go down, and then all the partners could stand up, and then we'll take a big picture, and then if you can briefly, very succinctly, if you have a few words, I'll give the mic over to you, and then we can proceed. So I will pass that over to you, and how about if I pass that over to you? And here, I'll pass this over to Councilmember Goldstein. Okay. City of Hayward proclamation. Whereas California is proud to be home of the largest Filipino-American population in the nation that contributes greatly to shaping, advancing, and enriching our community, and nearly 100,000 Filipinos live in Alameda County, representing 6% of its total population. And whereas Filipino-Americans are the third-largest Asian-American group in the United States and the second-largest Asian-American group in the state of California. And whereas the 2025 theme for Filipino-American History Month is "From quotas to communities: Filipino-American Migration and Movement," commemorating the 90th anniversary of the 1935 Filipino Repatriation Act and the 60th anniversary of the 1965 Immigration and Naturalization Act. And whereas the earliest documented evidence of Filipinos in the continental United States dates from October 18, 1857, when mariners called Luzones Indios, under Spanish command, landed on Morro Bay, California. And whereas the Filipino-American National Historical Society recognizes the year 1763 as the date of the first permanent Filipino settlement in the United States in St. Malo, Louisiana. And whereas Filipino men, women, men and women have made valuable contributions to all areas of life throughout California and the United States, including in government, business, education, arts and sciences, medicine and health care, law enforcement, and the military. Whereas Filipino-Americans have long history of engaging in social justice movements across the nation, including but not limited to the United Farm Workers Movement and the 1946 Sugar Strike in Hawaii. And whereas the Filipino-American communities have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while settling, while setting examples as model citizens and public servants. And whereas in November 2009, the United States Congress passed a resolution to officially recognize October as Filipino-American History Month. Now, therefore, I, Mark Salinas, Mayor of the City of Hayward, and on behalf of the Hayward City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give this a big round of applause. As a student of Ethnic Studies and as a 25-year educator of Ethnic Studies, one of the historical points that I always make sure I tell this story, and it's a historical point that is absolutely important, not only in California but throughout the United States, but Cesar Chavez and the United Farm Workers would not have been as successful as they were. He would not have been, him and Dolores Huerta, would not have been able to achieve the goals that they set out to achieve in negotiating labor contracts with grape growers, grape growers in particular. They would not have been successful if it weren't for Filipino farm workers joining the strike. Once Filipino farm workers joined the strike, the UFW went over the threshold, and every farmer, and particularly grape grower, fell in line and started to negotiate contracts with the UFW. So that is a historical point that absolutely has shaped this state and has shaped the country, particularly in our labor struggles. So with that said, thank you for this, and let's go down and take a picture, and all the partners can come up. Oh, is the superintendent, is the superintendent here, from HUSD? Oh, well, Madam Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, the Superintendent of the Hayward Unified School District, Chen Wu Fernandez. the groups, right?
Whoop, is it on? There we go. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Salinas, council, city staff, and all of our community partners and committee members here today. I'm delighted to be here today. My name's Lindsay Vienn, acting library director, and we are so honored to be working with the community today to really honor and celebrate the Filipino-American Heritage Month here. So our first speaker is from the Filipinex American Student Association, PASA, California State University, East Bay, and with us this evening, who's going to be speaking, is Zenji Amihan Darius.
My name is Zenji Amihan Darius Tedwi Tandok. I am California State University, East Bay's 54th president of the Filipinex American Student Association. PASA not only creates a space for Filipinos to thrive in their community and learn how to support one another and themselves, it also gives non-Filipinos an opportunity to learn our culture and be welcome and heard in our community, too. From our Filipinex American Community Conference, which guides our members to use their voices and be their own leaders to themselves and others, to our Filipinex Conscious Tonight, allowing all of us to show our culture through performance and pride. PASA no longer is just an organization at East Bay. It is an open door for new and returning members to experience and find love, courage, unity, and hope within themselves and their community altogether. Thanks to our founder, Randy Sabado, who founded PASA in 1968 as a response to the Marshal Law Act. Not only did he, Jerry Lo Sabado, and their friends create the flames to the organization, they helped me, my team, and the student leaders both before us and the ones ahead of us to continue being that flame, the light to show the Filipino community that our voices have never stopped and don't plan on stopping either. We will never stop directing our community to a brighter future, and again, to remember the ones before us who helped create the space we've been given and the ones we will help in the future to continue what we've made. Each year, our student leaders, known as CORE, gives themselves a name to guide their community for each semester. Our name is Hiraya, which means imagination, vision, and dreams. My CORE and I chose this name as we decided that this year, we will continue to fight, to love, and to encourage the ones around us and the ones who will hear us to never give up. Our name follows a phrase, Hiraya Manawari, which means, may your dreams and hopes come true. We will promise to make sure that our community, community's dreams and hopes will forever thrive. Thank you so much. Hiraya Manawari.
So well said. And for all of you who don't know, this is most of the committee members' first time attending a city council meeting, so this is very special for them this evening. Yay. Okay, so honoring our next guest, we have a representative, a very special one, the President of Hayward Unified School District's Board of Education, Mr. Peter Buffete.
Good evening, everyone. I proudly stand in front of you as the first Filipino elected to the Hayward Unified School District Board of Education. In my time here in this role, two of my proudest accomplishments are, one, three years ago that we started the APC Community Initiative. It was the Asian Pacific Islander Community Initiative, which allowed our parents to have their first Asian-American parent group here in Hayward Unified. It's perhaps the most outwardly visible evidence of our collective promise to ensure that our rich, vibrant community is seen, heard, and celebrated. My other favorite accomplishment while in office was, for this second, this past weekend, we celebrated for the second year in a row, the Filipino-American History Month celebration. We partner with Filipino-American Historical Society for this event, and this year, as well as last year, it was in the Performing Arts Center. It's a time for us to celebrate the rich contributions of our Filipino-Americans in our community, as well as highlight the involved Filipino-Americans in the community. Filipinos actually make up, are the fourth-largest student population here in Hayward Unified, and the district is steadfastly committed to celebrating the contributions of Filipinos and all of Hayward's diverse students. Our work, however, is not confined to celebratory months such as this one, rather is threaded throughout the year-long student experience, as is with all communities represented in HUSD. At a time when DEI is under attack, Hayward doubles down. Equity and inclusion are our core school values, our core school district values. Understanding, discussing, and valuing differences at school is essential for healthy learning environments. This benefits all students and our entire community. The diversity of our student body, our staff, and community is a strength of this district and is validated and affirmed every single day. The work that we're doing and the recognition, the activities that we do, such as this one tonight, send a powerful message to all of Hayward that we are all valued members of our rich, diverse Hayward community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buffete. And I'm just going to go ahead and conclude with just a few library remarks, if I can. So Hayward Public Library, throughout the month of October, proudly uplifts and celebrates the heritage of the Filipino community through literature, art, dance, music, and film and discussion. We have some amazing book displays and lists at the downtown library in Weeks Branch, and we have some amazing programs. We have a film and discussion program for stories about Filipino activism and food on Saturday, October 11, from 3:00 to 4:30 at Weeks Branch. We have a Filipino-American History Month art class, which is going to also be held at Weeks Branch, Friday, October 10, from 2:30 to 4 o'clock, which is going to be hosted by a local Hayward Arts Council artist, and who's going to be leading an unforgettable watercolor lesson for our seniors and active adults. And we also have a demonstration of Philippine dance and music, which is going to be Saturday, October 18, from 12:30 to 2:30 at Weeks Branch. So thank you to everybody for coming out tonight, and happy Filipino Heritage Month.
I will move on to our next item, which is public comments. This is reserved for anybody in the audience or online that would like to make a public comment on something that is on the agenda or not on the agenda, and I don't have any public comment cards, and I don't see anybody online, so I will close public comment and move on to city manager's report. No.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, city council members, unite, I have a few updates on events, programs, and projects by Hayward Public Library, the city's Public Works and Utilities Department. So last Saturday, October 4, the library hosted a local author festival, spotlighting 26 local authors and giving attendees an opportunity to hear new literary voices and support East Bay creativity. 130 people of all ages attended and shared very positive feedback. Our authors also loved it and really want to come back and do this again. This week is also Banned Books Week, recognizing the importance of free and open access to information. Banned Books Week was created in 1982 to counter a surge in book challenges in libraries, bookstores, and schools, and to support the freedom to seek and to express ideas. I'm really proud of the fact that our library commission, as well as our city council, you all have supported the right to unfettered access for our Hayward community. To find out more about these events, please go to the library's website, where you will find out about a lot more than just these. So many of you have probably noticed the Mission Boulevard on Street Parking Pilot Project, that's, we got quite a bit of comment on that. On Friday, September 26, public work staff converted the left lane of Mission Boulevard to parallel parking between A Street and D Street, right across from the library. Staff also installed and painted bulb outs or curb extensions with delineator posts at the intersections of Mission Boulevard and ABC and D Streets. The new parking spaces for local business customers and delivery vehicles will also serve as a buffer between pedestrians and fast-moving traffic, allowing for a safer, more inviting walking environment. Door-to-door outreach efforts with local businesses revealed overwhelming support for the project, and helped staff identify specific business needs such as commercial loading or short-term parking zones that became part of this pilot project. Staff will continue to collect data on traffic speed, traffic volume, and parking occupancy through spring of 2026 to measure the project's effectiveness. And coming up, International Walk and Roll to School Day, and I hope everyone in the audience is also listening to this. The City of Hayward will celebrate International Walk and Roll to School tomorrow, October 8. At least 12 Hayward schools are participating. Students, families, and other members of school communities are encouraged to walk, roll, bike, take transit, or use other non-motorized transportation to commute to school. When students arrive to school, they can place stickers on a mode chart to show how they got to school and participate in fun giveaways. According to the Alameda County Transportation Commission, transportation is responsible for nearly 40% of the Bay Area's harmful greenhouse gas emissions, and trips to school account for about 21% of all morning traffic. As council is aware, the city is distributing hundreds of free bikes to Hayward students through the grant-funded Hayward Rides Program. The program will be implemented in the next 12 months, and Hayward is proud to do its part to support active transportation for students. So hopefully, when the city celebrates Walk and Roll to School Day next year, even more students will be able to participate, and I hope all of us will also think of Walk and Roll to School as well as Walk and Roll to Work tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, we have been getting plenty of email on, you know, the bike lanes and the bulb outs and so forth, and I'm glad you mentioned in your report that the key objective, the key goal here, is to slow traffic down. If there is one message, one message that we hear loud and clear in every neighborhood from Rose Street to Gressel, and from Fairview all the way out to Industrial, is that cars travel too fast. And so one of the ways we are doing that is we are reconfiguring some of the infrastructure on some of the busiest roads in our city, and so we are working to make the roads safer and to slow traffic down, so thank you for that. Before I move on to the action items, I wanted to go back to public comments, reopen public comments, because I do have a public comment, and I wanted to make this public comment because I see him in the room, I see him in the chambers, and I don't know how long he's going to be here, but I do want to acknowledge him. I want to acknowledge the Hayward Area Park and Recreation District General Manager Jim Wheeler, who is sitting over there. I know he's a relatively shy guy, but I, the guy, the tie over there is Jim Wheeler, and Mr. Wheeler played, a week ago, we had the mariachi festival over at Southland Mall, and it was arguably one of the highest turnouts of the mariachi festival that we've ever had there at Southland Mall. There was a lot of kids, there was a lot of families, of course, we had mariachis, there were dancing horses, and we had wrestling. I mean, it was just a major, major event over at Southland. This event would not have happened if it weren't for one of the greatest and probably the most singular funder and sponsor of that event, and that is hard. Mr. Wheeler has not only funded the mariachi festival there at Southland, but hard, through his leadership, has funded the, were major funders of the downtown Hayward street parties. And so these events do not, they require a lot of planning, they require a lot of resources, and I personally, and I'm sure the council joins with me in this, I just wanted to say thank you very much for making these events happen this year. When resources are low, when we're all pinching pennies everywhere, you seriously stepped up and delivered some great events that were for the community. So let's give Mr. Wheeler in heart a big round of applause. And please tell the board thank you, and thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it. So I will close public comments, and I will move on to our action items, which is our consent calendar. Nobody has asked me to pull anything from our consent calendar, and so before I take a motion, I will move to see if there's any public comment. There are no public comment. I don't see any public comment online, so I will close public comment, and then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Goldstein.
Charles, second.
Second by Mayor Protem Roach, and if there are no objections, it will unanimously pass. Thank you. Next, I'd like to move on to our work session. Our first item is the Budget Status Update, oral report by city manager, and this is an informational item, and this item, this particular item, information and reports change daily, they change weekly, and so, and I should also add that this item is a, this item will be a recurring item, at least for the near future, and so, Madam City Manager, go ahead and kick this off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members. I will actually hand this off to Assistant City Manager Mary Thomas, who's also our acting finance director at this time. So, Mary?
Great, yes, thank you. And so, yes, as the mayor just mentioned, this will be a new standing item. We will share information orally, as I do have a couple of slides as it becomes available, and then this is also an opportunity for public comment if desired, and for council to ask us questions, and we can come back at the following meeting with additional information. So first, I did want to share that we did finish our year-end. We have released, there were some news releases that went out. In short, the year ended the way that we have been stating in the news releases, there were no changes. We had general fund expenditures of around $247 million and general fund revenues of around $217 million, which did result in a deficit of $30 million. This is just for the general fund, if you wanted to speak.
I just want to add for everyone, because often there is some misunderstanding about what general fund is. So this is a structural deficit. I want to really reassure our community that we do have funds to continue with all our services. Sewer, water, garbage pickup, everything will continue as always. You can see our roads are being fixed, everything, we are continuing, there's a lot of services that are continuing, the critical things that you'll depend on are definitely in stable condition, so, thank you.
Great, yeah, so again, this is a structural deficit in the general fund side of things. And so, I want, let me change slides here. Yes, so just wanting to share some actions that we've taken so far. We are holding vacancies, we've discussed this before, we'll be coming at another one of these work sessions to describe that in more detail, but in short, anything that's coming up in the general fund right now, we are reviewing heavily to see if it is considered essential, and if it is, you know, in any way not, we are not recruiting for that position. We also have taken steps to reduce overtime, such as ending special assignments in certain departments that were causing overtime, and looking at some shift changes. We've increased transfers in and reduced transfers out, this is sort of looking at other funds that are available and how those funds interact. We've already identified $5.7 million for this year. Now, these are just one time, that's a one-time deal, but we can do, use that this year. We've also paused any discretionary projects. We're preparing a list of trade-offs for council's consideration for those projects, and that will also come back at one of these work sessions around budget in the next month, basically saying, please don't spend any money right now, departments, if the project is not considered core to essential services. We want council to have the opportunity to weigh in on those projects on if they want to move forward or not. We've sought outside grant funding. We did just successfully receive grant for the paramedic program that was before council last time, so that is over $1 million that would be going to fund that program. going to fund that program. And we also have a moratorium on nonessential travel training and use of external consultants. So those are all in place right now, and then the timeline for moving forward is, there we go, is we have, in October, so we're in October, we are doing an outside fiscal review. We have an outside CPA accountant that is coming in to do that fiscal review. She'll be starting with the cash analysis, because as we mentioned, we had a major deficit and have low cash right now, so looking at that, we'll present that back to you as soon as that is complete. We also have the outside audit happening, that happens every year. All public agencies go through an outside audit, they look at the previous year's books, that is a three-month to four-month process, that will be completed in December, and we will share that information with you when it is complete. We are also in discussions with our labor partners on the budget situation and the structural deficit, and then we are preparing a fall revision. So for the members of the public, what this means is the budget that we presented in June, we now believe to be not accurate, and after looking at the numbers that came in last year, there was a much larger deficit than we anticipated, so we are reviewing all of our budget numbers and plan to bring to council a budget that is evidence-based, that is accurate, that will accurately reflect our costs for this year, as well as a budget that will have no use of reserves. So that is scheduled for November 18th. And then in January, we will have the fiscal analysts present the full fiscal review, as well as we'll present the findings from the outside audit. And then in February, we'll present an updated five-year model and options for moving to fiscal stability for next year and beyond. So those are the steps that we are taking right now, and I will open it up to any questions or comments.
Thank you. This is an informational item, so I do have a question from Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, and this is exactly what I was looking for in terms of budget updates, so thank you, I'm looking forward to seeing future presentations as we move forward through this issue. Wanted to talk about specifically, when you said discretionary projects, if we can revisit specifically the strategic roadmap, and we can methodically look at each project that are deemed nonessential, and review to make sure we are putting those projects a hold, or potentially looking at partnerships with other agencies, or any outside groups that will be able to assist in helping us move projects forward. So I would know, I would like to know if that could be a session on its own, if that's possible. And then also, I am interested in a joint infrastructure committee meeting with Hard. I know that the General Manager, Jim Wheeler, is here, but I want to talk to Hard about, specifically La Vista Park. I know that that is a big-ticket item that we should revisit, and we can potentially do something where the park is open, but maybe not have all the features that we anticipated, but at least something that will be accessible to the public, make it a nice, a nice park for the community, and we can focus on getting it open maybe even sooner if we reduce some of the features. And also, I know that the mayor mentioned events, he knows, Jim Wheeler knows that I'm going to be asking about Juneteenth, so very excited that we're going to talk about that soon, but in general, if there are events that the city is doing, let's list out all the events and see how we can partner with Hard, as well as the HIA and other community groups, so we can reduce that burden on the city budget. And I'm also looking at just different projects that have happened throughout the city. I want to give special kudos to Director of Maintenance Services, Todd Roman, for working on the monument sign on Jackson, something that was in disrepair, but was looking at, maybe looking at some of those CIP projects to see if there's any partnerships we can do with some of the property owners, or look at some of our, or maybe even the HIA, and looking at some of those projects to, again, reduce funding from the general budget. And then I know last, the last session, we talked about permitting, and it was really more towards regulations. I want to look at how we can move things faster, just in general, in our departments, and what does that look like? If it's an impact to staffing in terms of more money, I don't want to do that, but what are some of the efficiencies that other cities are finding in order to get business open, in order for us to generate more revenue? I think, let's see, I think the other thing I do want to give us a kudos, we had a great tour with the Economic Development Department during our Economic Development Committee meeting yesterday, and they talked about how their budgets were lowered, but there is potential opportunity for us to look at other projects or CIP projects for that. And just wondering if, would it make sense to do that in infrastructure, or would it make sense to do it here in council? So I don't know if this can be part of the budget session or not, so.
I don't have an answer on that one, but we can, we can talk to the Economic Development Officer and figure out the best way to get that information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tam Roach.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for this standing item. I think it's going to be really helpful for all of us, the community and us, to be able to air some of these concerns out while we work through this budget situation. I wanted to ask, could you explain, like, what is, what's the difference between hiring, a hiring freeze and, like, holding vacancies? I just want to know, like, where we are on that and how we're, how that's helping us.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question? The difference between the hiring freeze and?
And holding vacancies.
And holding vacancies. Well, I think the difference is we're trying to be a little bit strategic in determining which positions need to be held vacant without a severe impact on core services and safety, and so I think that's the difference, is that we're looking at them on a case-by-case basis, if they are positions that are funded out of the general fund. We're examining the importance of filling them, again, just in alignment with council priorities and public safety needs.
I mean, at some point, sorry, did you want to?
No, I was just going to say, also, if you do hiring, like, some kind of a hard hiring freeze, we would talk to the labor groups also about the impacts, yeah. It would be more formal, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, just at some point, wondering what, like, is there a hard line on that? And then the other question I had was, you know, along the same lines as events, you know, the street parties and everything, we often have a lot of staff out there, which is wonderful, but I'm assuming a lot of that is overtime hours for staff, and are we, you know, what are we going to do to curb that one at this point?
So we are having discussions with the various groups, and really, we're being very, like, what should I say, scrutinizing everything, and so we've definitely been having these conversations with our various groups that come to different events, yes.
I mean, it's wonderful, but I think right now, we're trying to curb overtime.
Yeah, and another thing I can say on that is, both of our, a lot of our overtime comes from our safety groups, because they do have minimum staffing levels that they try and meet, so we do have ability, the staff codes when they put in their overtime, if it was mandated overtime, meaning that it was there because there was a minimum staffing, or was due to minimum staffing or other reasons, and we are looking at that level at this point of what, what's the reason code for overtime, so that would flag that.
Okay, thank you. And then on the, so the fiscal oversight person you said might be starting in the next, you know, few days or so, okay. Let's see, and I think, and then the other thing is, I just really want to thank you, I just really appreciate the work that you're doing on all the other items that are coming our way, the consent items, I noticed, like, none of them this week have a general fund allocation, and so I assume there's a lot of work being done in the background to find other sources for that, if it did anticipate, if there was a budget, you know, transfer out of the general fund, I appreciate that that's obviously happening before it even gets to us, so thank you for doing that hard work. And I think, oh, and then on the, so you mentioned how you, we received grant funding on the paramedic program, so that means that $300,000 that we allocated last week is not going to go forward.
Yeah, so actually, last week, you guys, two weeks ago, you gave authorization for us to go with a vendor. The money was already in the CIP budget, so it was not a budget authorization at that, at that meeting, it was a, it was a resolution to allow us to execute an agreement with UC Davis. That said, we will come back, you do need to accept the grant funding, we've gotten the notice that we've gotten it, so we will bring that back, and we can change that staff report to really indicate that it will become out of that grant versus the previously stated Fund 405 source.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this update and for all of the transparency around these budget numbers. I know that there's a lot of tough decisions that are being made, but it seems like we're all working together and rowing in the same direction to, you know, face the reality that's in front of us, so I do appreciate all of the actions that have been taking, been taken so far. I also like the creativity in not just looking at slashing everything, but looking at where we can find alternative funding. So this whole grant, you know, that we received for the fire department, I just think is excellent as well, so thank you for bringing that up. What I was wondering is, maybe in the next report, when we see the actions taken so far, if there's a way to start seeing maybe a running tally of how much these actions are starting to accumulate, I think that that would be helpful, because we see that one of them has already identified 5.7 million, so it would just be good to kind of, you know, sort of see directionally how much we're achieving with these strategies that we're implementing. And then the other thing I would ask is, I know in the staff reports, you know, the fiscal impact is at the, I know we have it in the beginning and at the end, but I'm wondering, in the beginning, can, because typically at the end, it says what budget it comes out of, you know, general fund or CIP, or, you know, the capital fund, but can we just maybe put that up top as well, you know, so like, when we're reading it, like, you know, 280,000 out of the general fund or out of the, you know, just so it's right there upfront, no question about having to go to page two or three to figure out where it's coming from. And then I also really appreciate our move back to these five-year financial models, and, you know, when we're able to, of course, I would love to see that extended to potentially a 10-year model, as we're able to, but I think that this five-year is an excellent start. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the great work that's happening here, and thank you to my council colleagues for, you know, prioritizing this and for working so collaboratively to address a really important issue in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, or Menyo.
Mayor, thank you, and Mary and staff, thanks for the report, well outlined, good plan. So we, we are taking some steps to control the overtime, I'm hoping that that happens, that's a big monster out there. I'm happy that our acting city manager, Adam, had mentioned that services to our residents is in good shape, does continue, because that's very, very important. So I do get some emails and phone calls and social media. Will you still fix the potholes? Would you still do some sidewalk repairs? And yes, we do that, those are very, very important, public safety also, extremely important. Happy that our mayor mentioned the streets being refigured to a degree in order to ensure public safety of our pedestrians and our cyclists, they're very, very important. So I want to, I'm happy that this, these reports will continue, and I'm hoping that there are no cuts that will be made on the number of trees that we are going to plant in the city of Hayward, because that's very, very important to all of us. We do want to continue being a tree city, along with all the other projects that we Thank you very much, all right, good job. I think I saw Director Drummond and Director Mary smiling when I mentioned trees, because I'm not the only tree lover in the group, so, thank you. Raise your hand if you planted a tree, all you guys out there, have you, who has planted a tree, raise your hand? Okay, we need to see more of you youngsters planting more trees, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Syrah.
Thank you, Mayor, just wanted to say thank you as well for putting this up, for our community to see, I think transparency moving forward is going to be really critical for us to move through this together. I just want the community to know that in addition to trying to address this significant deficit, our staff are responsible for the regular day-to-day duties of running the city, so there have been numerous meetings, tons of reports pulled together in a very short amount of time to really try to get a handle on this budget situation, and I'm just deeply appreciative of all the extra hours that you're all putting in to help us get a handle on this deficit. I also just want to say thank you to our labor partners as well. I'm really excited to see that we're beginning discussions with labor partners, and this will be a partnership and a group effort to pull us out of this deficit, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure we can keep our city functional and moving forward for the betterment of all of our residents. So thank you for coming to the table and hearing us out.
Thank you. I don't have any more comments from the council, but I'll just end by saying thank you very much. This, this is an ongoing conversation, and this report certainly sets us up, sets us up to continue to provide feedback, be transparent on what's going on, and to work collaboratively. So thank you very much. Okay, so I'd like to close this item. Madam City Clerk, I don't need to open this up for public comment or anything, I just go straight to?
Mayor, since it's a work session, it would be a good idea to open it for public comment.
Good point, so I should have done public comment at the beginning, but I will open up for public comment, is I don't see, let me see, I don't see, I don't have any cards, and I don't see anybody online, so I will close public comment, and then I will move on to our next item, which is Hayward Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Article 13, Review of Campaign Finance Regulations, Including Campaign Expenditures and Contributions As The City Converts From At-Large Council Elections To District Elections Starting In 2026, and I believe our acting city manager, Adelman, will kick this off.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think I'm going to turn this over to, to Mary, our Assistant City Manager, again, Mary Thomas, yeah, wearing many hats this evening.
Happy to do this, but this, and I do want to mention, this was a collaborative, a collaborative effort with the City Attorney's Office and the City Clerk's Office, and they are both available for questions and comments, if you have some from their end. So this was a, we're returning to you, this was a council referral last spring, and so this, you are now seeing this item as a work session. So to give you some background, in 2002, the city council enacted a municipal code that sets voluntary limits on campaign contributions. Basically, if you voluntarily, you know, accept these limits on how much you're going to spend, then you are allowed to spend, accept higher amounts in contributions, so I'll put those on the next slide. It also authorizes the city clerk to increase the limits annually based on the CPI, so we have that currently in place. And then the other background for this particular work session is that, as you all remember, last year, the city converted to, to the six city council members to district elections, and there's roughly 27,000 residents per district, and so this particular item is to consider if we want to, if you as a council would like to reduce the voluntary limits because the districts are smaller than the at-large city. These are the existing limits, so you can see the originally adopted, but most recently in 2025, if you, if the candidate does accept the voluntary limit, they can spend up to $91,000, and the contribution limit per individual is $1,784. If the candidate does not accept the voluntary limits, they can spend as much as they want, however, the contribution limit for them from individual donors is $410. We also compared cities that recently went through districting to see how they have changed their, their voluntary expenditure limits. So Union City, Redwood City, San Mateo, these are all, they have districts. You can see here, what this table shows you is the population in those cities, the number of districts they have, with the number of people in each district, as you can see, these are all smaller than the Hayward's districts would be, Hayward's districts is 27,000, the highest here is San Mateo, which has 20,000 per district, and then the contribution limits for individuals to donate, as well as the expenditure, voluntary expenditure limits. So one way to think about this is the expenditure limit per resident, and so in fact, Redwood City and San Mateo, that's how they set their ordinance, is they said that the expenditure limit would be based on their resident, and you apply a multiplier, so $2.45 per resident for Redwood City, and $2.50 in San Mateo. We did some backend math, so it's around $2.17 for Union City, if you just look at their voluntary limit and their population. If Hayward were to follow suit with the sort of average here of these, you know, it's around $2.30, that's around $60,000 per district, so that was something, that's something for you to consider. However, what some other considerations is, there is some economy of scale when running a campaign, and so as, as we were just saying, that would be roughly $60,000 per district if you were to follow exactly what these other cities were doing, because there's some economy of scale, meaning that you're hiring one campaign manager, you might, you know, doing some of the social media costs, you can basically scale up, you may want to consider. scale up. You may want to consider as a council having a slightly lower amount and matching these neighboring cities. So, between $45,000 to $50,000. On the previous slide, San Mateo has the highest one, because their district is the highest, they have around $50,000 per district. So, that was something that staff wanted to present as options. This, however, is, is fully a policy decision. So, staff is suggesting $45,000 to $50,000 as a voluntary limit on expenditures and 900 to 1,000 on voluntary contributions. However, this really is a policy decision on how much council would like to, to limit that. Also a reminder, these limits do not apply to independent expenditures. Those are still separate. We do, as a city, require reporting for some of that, but not all of it. And then some candidates have already begun fundraising for this coming election. So, something you may want to consider is the timing for when these limits take place, if people have already started fundraising and not wanting to punish them for money that's come in so far. So, some discussion points tonight that will help us as staff come back with, come back to you with, with a legislative agenda item are, one, first of all, should we limit the, or reduce the expenditure limits for the districts versus the at-large? If so, what should those limits be? And then finally, when should those limits take effect? So, we're seeking direction from you as a group for us to be able to come back with, with legislative item.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So, before I come to council, this is a work session item. So, what I want to do first is open up for public comment. I don't have any cards. Let me check online. I don't have any public comment online. So, I will close public comment and then come up here to council. Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. And also, I just want to thank my council colleagues for making room for this discussion. I know we have a lot on our plate right now as a city, and I know that we also weren't very thrilled about moving to districts either, but I think as we transition to districts, we should be doing so responsibly. And so, I'm happy that we're making room to discuss what the future of our electoral process looks like now that the landscape has changed. For the public's knowledge, every council member seated up here was elected at-large, meaning that we had to reach out to over 80,000 registered voters across the entire city to win our seats. That means sending mail, making calls, hiring staff, and it takes resources, which is why our expenditure limit is approximately $90,000. And I think makes sense, given that those expenses and the amount of people we have to reach can drive up costs quite quickly. But even with this high limit, everyone up here was able to win their election while raising less than $60,000. So, the proposal to lower this to potentially $50,000 doesn't seem too far-fetched to me, because most of us are raising around that amount of money already when we are running across the entire city and trying to reach 80,000 people. Now, we have to only reach 15,000 or less. I know every district has 27,000 people, but that doesn't mean that they're all registered to vote. Some districts have a little bit under 12,000. And so, to me, this is really about the principle of making sure that money doesn't play an outsized role in politics. The expenditure limit was set because of the advocacy of residents 20 years ago, including former council member Al Mendel and former District 2 Director Jenny DiMartini. They formed a citizens advocacy group called CASH. You can look up the, the agenda item in our, in our city resources. And they fought to ensure that money didn't corrupt our local elections. And at a time when we're seeing things like Citizens United make money more influential in politics and allow folks to buy politicians, I think it's important at the local level that we protect that principle. At the county level, we have some supervisors suggesting that they double their independent expenditure limit, which would mean that money played a larger role in their politics. And I think we run the risk of doing the same thing if our voting population decreases, but we also don't decrease our maximum spending limits at the same time. We're kind of reverse engineering and increasing contributions that way. I understand there might be an interest in waiting to assess, but I think we're capable of thinking critically about the principle of the original ordinance and protecting that principle. By, I'm open to reassessing this ordinance in a year, but I think we can do that after updating our limits. I think it's more responsible to protect the progress that our city has made on campaign finance reform rather than undoing it. And I think that we actually would be undoing that by not touching it now. I know there's a concern around independent expenditures and PACs, and I actually would like to see stronger rules at some point in helping us understand what those reporting requirements are and what, if any, power we have to ensure that there is better reporting and better transparency around independent and outside spending in our local elections. I know that's not part of the question tonight, but I do think it's something worth us considering. I am supportive of the staff recommendation. I wouldn't want to go below 50,000 personally for the voluntary expenditure maximum, and I wouldn't want the individual contribution to be lower than 1,000 either. We still need to raise these funds from our community. But and to put that into perspective, you could maximize, you could max out your fundraising campaign if you have 50 rich friends that give you $1,000. And I'm not saying any of us up here do that, but I just, I think the focus that we all want to achieve here is that the person that's running for office is really embedded in their community and wins by talking to as many people as possible. And I'm so committed to this that, you know, staff had mentioned that some candidates have already begun fundraising. I have started fundraising, but I haven't accepted any donations over $1,000, because I was the person that put this idea forward. And I'm actually happy to be the guinea pig in my election of abiding by this new fundraising limit. And so, this isn't me trying to project an idea on somebody else's campaign or make it harder for anybody else to run for office. If anything, it's meant to make this role more accessible and easier for folks to run for office. And I'm happy to throw myself out there to see how it works. And maybe I'll be eating my words in a few, a few months. We'll see. The last thing I want to say about independent expenditures and PACs is that money's going to be spent regardless, either directly to the candidate that those donors want to support or through that PAC. If they really don't like you, they're going to spend the money one way or another. And that's why I think it's important to limit how much that influences anyone's individual campaign, so that they can focus on rallying the community. So, those are my comments. I appreciate, you know, making room for this discussion again, and I hope that we can move forward with protecting the principle of campaign finance reform that we established 20 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also in agreement that a 50,000 limit and a $1,000 personal contribution, I, I think those are good limits. I'm a little confused about one topic, though. I understand what economies of scale means, but I'm not sure how you're applying it. Can you explain that and fill me in, please?
Michael, feel free, Mary or Michael to jump in. But in short, staff reached out and you, and you guys have direct on the, on the ground experience running a campaign, so you can speak to this too. But staff reached out to some campaign consultants who work on campaigns to ask what parts of those expenditures, you know, because what, one would imagine you have a smaller number of voters that you're trying to reach, that some of them are like scalable, you have to send mailers. So, smaller amount of voters, you're sending smaller amount of mailers. However, some other areas are fixed. So, yeah. So, so this is sort of the idea of as you go smaller, some, some areas are fixed and some are, are scalable. But so that was what that was intended to.
Okay. Because I, I, in my experience, and I'm not the most experienced person up here on the dais, but I have some experience in this thing. And it seems to me that some of the things that you might think are adjustable probably are not. For example, yes, it's true that you're not going to have to send mailers to 80,000 voters. I think the actual number is around 27,000 households. The number's smaller, but it still costs you the same for the artwork. It still costs you the same for the printer to set up. And so, although that number is smaller, it's not.
Yeah. And so, that was why when staff was looking at this, because one could, we, what we could have done is say, let's look at the current campaign contribute, so let's look at the, this, these numbers, the, the current voluntary limits, and just divide those by six, because it, but then that's, that's sort of what we're saying is that there, that, that, that probably doesn't work because of what you're saying is there's these fixed costs.
Right, right. Exactly. And, and those are actually my reasons for saying that 50,000 is probably the right number. And we may have to revisit, revisit that in a year. Obviously, the cost of, you know, it's a little uncertain right now what the, what the campaign consultants and the printers are going to ask to be doing, you know, smaller campaigns with shorter printing runs. It's kind of an unknown. So, we're guessing that 50,000 is the right amount. Feels right, but we're not really going to know until we have some guinea pigs actually running their campaign. So, thank you, thank you for doing that. In terms of the timing of putting this in place, yeah, I agree. Let's not punish people. We're still trying to feel our way, learn, learn our way through this. But one more question about this. We, we talked about a per-person rate of $2.17 based on that formula of, of what was discussed earlier. But, you know, rather than having to revisit what that dollar amount is every time, can we write the legislation in a way that maybe is based on some factor that's automatic, so we're not having to revisit the actual dollar amount every year? Have you considered that part?
It goes up by CPI.
Goes by, goes up by CPI?
Yeah. So, all of those cities that had that, oops. So, all of these cities, Redwood City, Union City and San Mateo, those district population numbers will go up by CPI as well.
Okay. All right. Great. That answers all my questions. I like the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you. Yeah. And I know we're going to come back and revisit this. And, and I appreciate the work in the staff report based on the feedback from the past. You know, and I, and I'm, I'm fine with us adjusting the spend, expenditure limit. You know, we, a lot of us didn't, we reached, barely reached that amount in the past. And so, you know, coming down to a smaller district, although, you know, based on some of the, I think, just talking about the economies of scale, it's true that like, I don't know that mailing's going to cost that much less because prices will have gone up again. And, you know, we all use individual help, you know, resources, vendors and things like that to do that. And none of us actually mailed 80,000 pieces anyway. You know, we would have mailed some smaller version of, you know, targeted pieces. I don't know that that sort of, some of these expenditures will go down that much, because while we have smaller people, we're all, are going to have to can, develop a campaign structure that has, we're all our own little islands in our districts at this point, you know, when we run. But I appreciate the intent in us saying, let's right-size this back to district. So, so I'm, I'm fine with the staff recommendation on the 50,000. I like, thank you for, it's well reasoned. I appreciate that, you know, looking at the other, other cities and what they did once we went to districts. On the individual limit, I mean, you know, some of us are already in a campaign cycle. I'd really, I'd, I'd like us not to start this for 2026. I'd like to see it in 2028 if we come to some agreement. I don't think I'd like to go lower than 1,500, just because I think the way a lot of it works is some of us are able to get a few donations and then, and then the bulk of it becomes into smaller individual donations. And I think being able to get some of those larger donations sort of helps seed our campaigns. I don't think any of us are out here, you know, with, with a ton of large individual contributions, but I would, I, I wouldn't like to see us go any lower than 1,500 on the individual contribution. I think that's, let's see, and like, so it will go up. So, if, if we reset, set it now to 50,000, then over time, like, we get that annual report from the city clerk's office, that would go up every year, right, again from the 50,000? Is that right? Okay. Yeah. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the staff report and for the thoughtful comparisons that were contained within them. I also, you know, do agree that this is the time to be revisiting this, especially as we move into districts and wanting to make sure that we have, you know, the most level is playing field for our elections as possible, to really make sure that those community leaders that, you know, are here to represent the voice of Hayward and the betterment of our city, you know, aren't necessarily pushed out because of high financial contributions or things like that. So, I do appreciate this conversation and Councilmember Cyrop for bringing this up. I also agree that, you know, $50,000 seems to be about the right number for the voluntary expenditure limit. As far as the voluntary contributions, you know, because on, I, I think, you know, I agree that we could move forward with this and implement it in the 2026 cycle. However, because I don't want to, you know, over-impact people who've already started, you know, their fundraising and, you know, it says limits do not apply to, well, anyways, I don't want to kind of impact or inadvertently punish those that have already started raising money. So, I think $1,500 seems to be the right number for the voluntary contribution limit, especially because if people have already started, you know, raising money and getting contributions, to put a cap, that's nearly half of what is currently allowed, I think, is too much too quick. So, I would say $1,500 for the individual voluntary contribution limit and then $50,000 overall would make a lot of sense to me. The other thing, just to be clear, because in some of the comparisons, the role of the mayor was included, because the mayor is at-large here in Hayward, I think that the current limits as they stand for at-large elections in Hayward should apply to the mayor, but I'm open to hear what my colleagues have to see, to say. So, I would say that these changes would apply to council excluding the mayor. And just to be clear, I would, I would go with $50,000 per, per election with $1,500 as the maximum individual contribution limit. Thank you. Oh, and then my, my last question. Okay. So, before, I, I know I said I want this in '26, but obviously, I want a lot of things in '25 and '26 and '27 that we're going to have to negotiate with, right? How much of staff time is this going to take? You know, is this the right, you know, in the conversation that Councilmember Andrews was talking about in terms of priorities, you know, because if this is going to, you know, sink a lot of staff time right now when we don't have that staff time, I'm open to put it off to '28. But if it's something that we think we can do and it's a relatively minimal lift, I'm fine moving it forward now. But I really want us to be very considerate about all of what we're putting forward and asking staff when, right now, staff, you know, staff time is so constrained and, you know, it, it contributes to increased budget costs. So, just wanted to be mindful of that and kind of get what your opinion is on that. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
A few hours. It, just a few hours. It would not take more than a day.
Great. Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to take that moment to, all of the research in this report was really done by the City Attorney's Office and the City Clerk's Office. I'm just presenting. But yes.
Great. Councilmembers, your menu.
Sorry. In light of that, then I would say we can do it in '26.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thanks again for the good report. I like all the comparisons with the other cities, the way it was broken down. And I do like the idea of doing this for various reasons, some of which were presented by colleague Cyrop. Recommendations are good. I certainly do not mind them. In my mind, at the moment, we have a more pressing issue, which is our economic situation. So, I would not mind if we waited for this to happen after the elections in 2026. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to hold my comments to the end, but Councilmember Cyrop.
Sorry, just for the sake of helping build consensus here, because I think it'd be nice if we moved together in alignment around it. I'm okay with 1,500 as well. I do feel it's, it's important for us to initiate this and revisit it. So, if we can do 1,500 but kick it off this year, knowing that it only takes a few hours to launch, like, I, I can live with that. I don't know how other folks feel. And then completely agree, let's leave the mayor's seat alone. That's an at-large seat. That would go against the whole motivation behind this referral, which is right-sizing these contributions specifically for districts.
It's kind of weird to hear your name in the third person, but you know. I, well, let me say this. I appreciate Councilmember Cyrop sort of tying it up here. Based on what I've heard, is that it'll be a 2026, we can plan it for 2026 election. It'll be a $50,000 campaign limit and, or you can't go over $50,000. And then, individual contributions can't be more than $1,500. That's pretty much what I heard. Okay. And, and of course, the, the mayor's campaign would stay, will stay the same. Nothing changes. And, okay. Okay. I can, I can live with that. And so, there are no more questions. This is a, this is a work session. So, do you have what you need, Ms. Thomas, City Attorney's Office? Perfect. And so, you said a few hours, so we can, by midnight? Okay. Thank you. I will move on to our legislative item. Our legislative business is Proposed Amendments to the Maintenance and Repair of Sidewalk Ordinance. Introduce an ordinance amending Hayward Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Article 2, Streets, clarifying the duty to maintain and repair sidewalks. And this report is going to come to us by way of the City Attorney's Office.
It is. I'll introduce a Bedeem here and he's going to take. I'll introduce a Medem here, and he's gonna take it over.
The, part of the function of maintaining sidewalks is the maintenance services department, and so it's a joint presentation between our two departments. But thank you, Mayor, and the council. Tonight, we close out the meeting by discussing our sidewalks and what we do with them. So just as a background for you, the city has over 430 miles of sidewalks. They're maintained in three different ways. So as you have tree roots lifting up sidewalks, or you have maybe sewer laterals or water pipes going under those sidewalks, there's construction being done, sometimes cracks develop, sometimes sagging develops. All of that causes trip and fall hazards. And the primary responsibility for maintaining those hazards, or maintaining the sidewalks and fixing those hazards, is on the adjacent property owners. And I'll go into that in additional detail in a minute here. But the other two ways are through access Hayward requests, which come through directly to director enrollment and maintenance services department. They will then send out their teams to inspect and fix, temporarily repair, these potentially dangerous conditions. And along with that, a notice is sent out to the property owner informing them of the need for a permanent repair. The other, the third way that sidewalks get fixed in the city is through capital improvement projects. So this is your cycled, whole-scale sidewalk repair in a given neighborhood, which rotates through, I believe, the 10 districts that Public Works has outlined. And so that's kind of the general background for you. So as you may be aware, since approximately 1941, state law, California state law, has been that if you own property in the state and there's a sidewalk in front of your home, you are responsible for that sidewalk. That has been state law since 1941. The city of Hayward adopted an ordinance essentially mirroring state law and confirming that in 2001, so about 40, about 24 years ago. One of the incentives that we provide to property owners to fix the sidewalks in front of their homes is to provide a no-cost encouragement permit. Encouragement permits for this type of work run about $500 or so. And so one of the ways that city staff incentivize property owners to fix the sidewalks is we reduce that cost to zero. Now, the property owners are still, because they are working in a public right of way at that point, they would be responsible for hiring a contractor who's licensed and bonded. But the city-side cost of the permit is reduced to zero. So the ordinance that you've had for 24 years not only requires property owners to repair those sidewalks in front of them, but it also authorizes city staff to repair those sidewalks when a property owner is non-responsive and see reimbursement through assessments on the tax bill of the following year. In front of you, you see a map of about five years' worth of access Hayward requests related to sidewalks. And so you could see that the issue is widespread throughout the city. It's not limited to a single district. And we thought it was important to highlight this, that we can't specifically focus on the downtown area or commercial districts, that this is everywhere in Hayward. On average, just for your information, the city receives about 93 access Hayward requests per year regarding sidewalks. And so the proposed ordinance that we have in front of you does a couple of things. Since the adoption of the ordinance in 2001, there was some subsequent litigation, and the courts have essentially imposed the need for cities to use clear and unambiguous language if they intend to hold property owners liable for failing to fix the sidewalks and cause these dangerous conditions to continue. So the language that you see in this ordinance, this is part of it, the entirety of the ordinances in your packets. This seeks to clarify the duty of property owners to fix the sidewalks and to subsequently hold the property owners liable. Because without this, we're essentially saying, where a property owner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their home, if they fail to fix that sidewalk and allow these conditions to exist and someone gets hurt, then the city's on the hook. We're essentially allowing property owners to walk away from that responsibility. So this bridges this gap. This amendment bridges that gap. And then finally, I'll just end on some impacts here. And so we've consulted with our insurance partners regarding potential impacts of this ordinance. We've been told that in the industry, homeowners, the thought is that, thought and experience is that homeowners' insurance rates won't go up just through the passage of the ordinance, or at least there's no anticipation of that at this time. There's the encouragement permit that I already mentioned, that's a zero cost to the property owners. And then when we brought this ordinance initially to the airport and infrastructure committee and received general support from the committee, one of the things we talked about is the potential for hardship program. We discussed it at length. There are some options available. I'm happy to discuss them more with you. But that discussion was in June. We find ourselves today in a different economic reality for the city. And so if you wish to discuss that, I can certainly go into more details. And then we've briefly talked about it already, but the impacts for the city are significant fiscal impacts to the general fund, particularly in light of the changes to some of our insurance and also just the 93 access Hayward requests per year result in, certain result in some claims against the city if those conditions are not fixed. So I'll end it there. I'm available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you for putting this together and helping us legally find ways to avoid impacts to our budget. Just was curious about the communication strategy around this change to residents, just so that people don't all of a sudden get a nasty letter in the mail and then, you know, we get a nasty letter in our inbox.
Yeah, we can work with our partners in the city manager's office to put this out through an access, through a stack mailer or stack article to alert property owners of this change. Realistically, there is little change that property owners will see in the day-to-day operations. As we sit here today, your ordinance already requires director enrollment to send out these notices to property owners, and his team regularly does that. So in terms of the changes, the main change will be at the lawsuit stage where a member of the public is injured and they sue the city, and the city would bring in a property owner as co-defendants into the lawsuit. But the reality is, we already do that. And so there, in terms of that, there's very little change that happens in sort of the day-to-day operations of the city.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, you know, mass communication might not be necessary in this case, but knowing that there's a hardship program, and I appreciate you sharing that here today, I think it's important for folks to, that I feel like that might be beyond them if they find themselves in that situation.
Right. And so the hardship program could be structured in a couple of different ways, and we've surveyed some cities. San Francisco has one, San Jose has one as some examples, Oakland has one as well. Some of these programs rely on a certain amount of funding that the city council would come up with as sort of a running fund for property owners to be able to dip into. You could settle on an amount of $50,000 or $100,000, whatever you want that fund to look like. And property owners, on a first-come, first-served basis, would be able to apply, as they apply for a no-cost encouragement permit to fix the sidewalk in front of their home, they would apply for funding. That fund could be limited to a certain amount per applicant. I've seen numbers that range, let's say, 7,500 per applicant. Some cities also do a sort of a halfway match. So if, they'll pay 50% out of this type of a fund up to an amount, let's say 5,000 or 7,500, something like that.
Got it. And then last question here is, and I'm sorry if I missed this in the report, with the creation of this fund, are we seeing an increase in a general fund impact, or we've already set aside money for this? And we just need to figure out how to structure it.
Yes, thank you. There is no, this would be a new program, so that would be whatever amount of fund you decide on if you wanted to have a hardship-based program, that would come out of the general fund, and there's no current allocation for that. So that would be an additional fiscal impact.
Got it, okay. And so we'll just need to have that conversation at a later date beyond just kind of clarifying the language here in this ordinance.
Yes, that is not part of the current ordinance.
Great, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Councilmembers, your menu.
Mayor, thank you, and thank you for the report. I think it's a good idea, as one who had to pay $100 for repairing my sidewalk in front. On, my question is, my, our sidewalk was also shaved free of charge. Is that program still continuing? Will that still continue? And it was shaved because there was a slight rise, and the towers prevent somebody from tripping. But I was not charged for that.
I believe that's part of the capital improvement program that I was talking about earlier. So some sidewalks are selected for, certain districts are selected for an annual or semi-annual repair, such as shaving, and they'll go through, public works staff will go through an entire neighborhood and cover the sidewalks in those regions.
So complete reconstruction, that's where we would be liable, the homeowner, but shaving perhaps not. Okay, all right.
And just to be clear, what we're talking about today is the response to director enrollment's team when they go out for a specific issue. So while some of those specific issues may exist in the capital improvement project, let's say, district for that year, not all of them would be covered by that. And so it just would happen to line up that maybe the sidewalk in a certain district is covered that year. That's great for you as the homeowner, you get that service. But other districts may not have that program available in that year, and they would be responsible for their own sidewalk.
All right. I have received some emails from homeowners who have complained that a tree that was planted in the city destroyed their sidewalk, and now the city was having them pay to fix that sidewalk. Is this part of that program, or is this related? How is that related?
So what we're talking about today is specifically the backend side of things, the liability side of things. The rest of the ordinance is staying the same in that property owners are responsible for sidewalk repairs. Whether those repairs are, what is the ultimate cause of the sidewalk issues is sort of a separate discussion that we're not bringing today, but we can certainly address it at a later time if you'd like to bring separate changes to the ordinance.
Okay. Mayor, I suppose that's something where the homeowner can contact the city. I didn't plant the tree, why'd I have to fix it? But that's something else. And actually, some of those access Hayward calls that were filed for bad sidewalks probably were done by me, because as I walked the district looking for, you know, knocking on doors, I would almost trip over some of these sidewalks that were just uprooted by the trees, so.
Just for the record, how many of the 93 per year do you file?
At least, at least a few. Anyways, thank you. I think this is good. And I like colleague Syrup's point about making sure that our residents get to know what this is all about, one way or another. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I have been concerned about this in the past. I do have some questions. So you were saying homeowners, you don't think homeowners' insurance will change, but does homeowners' insurance generally cover the sidewalk in front of people's homes?
It would depend on each policy, so I don't know, I can't answer that specifically. But what homeowners' insurance would cover is often the liability defense. So if someone was to trip on a sidewalk and that property owner's brought into a lawsuit, their homeowner's insurance will often, again, without seeing the policy, it's hard for me to say, but that policy will often cover the defense.
Okay, because what I've read is a lot of homeowners' insurance policies are specifically excluding sidewalks now when cities move to switching liability, which is what we're talking about doing. And so I am concerned about the situation where somebody has a catastrophic trip and fall in somebody's, in front of somebody's house, they're now liable for that, and they could be liable to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially, even though I hear that they're co-defendant with the city. You know, therefore, you know, if insurance doesn't cover, doesn't cover all of it, your average homeowner would, you have a difficulty absorbing 10,000, 100,000, whatever it is, and potentially lose their homeowners' insurance if such a thing happened. And so I have read a little bit more about how some cities instead are doing something where they, there's, if, if the, if the sidewalk hazard is of the homeowner's doing, like, they somehow did something to, I don't know, like, dig up their, you know, sidewalk or something like that, that would be reasonable. But otherwise, by shifting liability, we're potentially putting people in, you know, I am very concerned about what we're putting on the individual. I mean, and I know I should be saying, let's do this because of our budget situation, so I don't want to discount what that does. I'm just not sure this is how I want to do it on the backs of homeowners that, in a city like Hayward, I mean, if you're talking about Danville, sure, shift the liability at homeowners in Danville. In Hayward, I think your average homeowner would have a really big, it would be really difficult to even come up with $5,000, $10,000 for your average settlement if that's what it looks like. So I'm actually really concerned about shifting this liability and what it might do, especially given the insurance landscape right now in California. You know, I think we're, you know, making it difficult for people.
Yeah, and if I can just respond quickly.
Please.
Case law on this particular issue is very clear in that the city cannot shift full liability to the property owner. So what, functionally, the way this will play out is, as these lawsuits develop, there will be a discussion about who caused these issues, whether it was a pipe that the homeowner installed, or the city tree roots, or how much notice was given to each property owner. But I think at a, I understand your concern. Practically speaking, most of the homeowners we've encountered in these lawsuits are covered by insurance, are, their defense is covered by their insurance. But I think one of the ways, a different way you can look at this as well is, the responsibility under the current ordinance is for property owners to fix the sidewalks in front of their homes. We are getting to this point in the discussion about liability is when those property owners fail to repair the sidewalks in front of their homes as they're required to by this ordinance. And again, one of the, one of the available options within the ordinance for your staff is to go in and fix those sidewalk issues if the property owner is not willing to do that, and then assess that amount on their property taxes. So I just want to be clear that when we're talking about potential impacts on insurance and we're talking about potential impacts on property owners, those impacts come into play when a property owner does not fix the sidewalks as they're required to do under your current ordinance.
Sure, but even in that situation, you know, like you said, I mean, a street tree could be the reason, and that's often the case, right? A street tree has buckled the sidewalk. You know, and also going back to the original, like, I understand it's established state law that adjacent property owners are responsible for the sidewalk. That is not intuitive. I didn't understand that when I bought a house. I'm guessing most people don't understand that, that, you know, because you have no ability to fence in your sidewalk. You can't make your sidewalk wonderful river rock. You can't, like, you don't have any right to encumber the sidewalk at all. So I don't think it's intuitive for most people to understand this. So I do think, you know, to the point of, to the point of, like, you know, public awareness if we're gonna do this, like, maybe there is some. But, and I understand what you're saying, like, practically, they're not gonna, you know, be facing hundreds of thousands of dollars, but they could. There have been cases where homeowners have been faced with hundreds of thousands of dollars in liability. And so, so, to me, this is not, this feels a little more weighty. I mean, it's not an easy thing to say, let's switch, let's pass off liability, because I'm wondering, have we thought, I made this question to Todd, because I agree with you. Most people don't know, I've gotten plenty of the same call. with you, most people don't know, I've gotten plenty of the same calls, like, hey, I'm not responsible for that tree that's buckled my sidewalk, do I really have to pay, right? And there, you know, obviously, a lot of people aren't paying, right? And then the city goes out and fixing, fixes it. But have we thought instead about, you know, significant fines for not doing it, rather than this? Because I am worried about the, you know, maybe they're not cases that don't happen very often, and maybe the city attorney wants to weigh in on that. Let me see, put your mic on.
Thank you. If the city tree is responsible for the sidewalk displacement, then the city should fix the sidewalk, and the homeowner shouldn't be responsible for damages resulting from a sidewalk that's displaced by city tree roots, one. Two, we've had many, many cases that have been litigated. We've never had a homeowner or property owner whose insurance did not cover the exposure or the risk, or refused to defend. And thirdly, in those cases, the city never tries to absolve itself of liability. The city remains a party, and the city inevitably contributes if there is exposure and potential liability. The city never attempts to shift all responsibility to an adjacent property owner. This is a significant policy issue. The report indicates that many cities have had this discussion and have adopted the policy, understanding that we are in challenging fiscal situation. It is extremely difficult for us to have a case where liability is somewhat disputed, and the city ends up paying over 90% of the settlement amount. The council has seen cases where we settled cases involving injury for over $500,000. And the adjacent property owner contributed, you know, less than 5% of that amount. I think that's the goal, and we acknowledge that it's a policy question. We'll certainly try and communicate, we will communicate to the public. But I think--
Maybe my problem is in the wording of the ordinance, because it says, if a result, if as a result of property owner's failure to maintain a sidewalk, any person suffers injury or damage, the responsible person shall be liable to such person. So there is no sort of wording of co-liability or anything, because if they, it doesn't say to no fault, like, if a resulting property owner's failure to maintain a sidewalk, even if it wasn't their responsibility because a tree buckled, then they're like, right, I mean, it doesn't make any room for that. To me, this is an absolute, if someone is injured on your sidewalk, you are liable. So I don't see, you're saying as a practicality, the city takes responsibility, but, or takes co-liability, but that's not in the wording of the ordinance. And so it makes me, you know, like, to me, this looks like, if we had no money, we could say, it's all you do. And I'm, you know, that, this makes me a little uncomfortable. I mean, I understand other cities are doing it, I guess I'd like to look at some of the wording, I should have done that before tonight. But it's, it's, to me, it's an absolute liability here.
So what if we just work with that language? And I have some ideas about it, that we need to spend some time talking about, to address the question, so that it, it's, so just, just for example, can you put that, okay, can you put that back on the screen? The word says, the responsible person shall be liable to such person for the resulting damages or injury. Just sort of thinking off the top of my head, it might say, the responsible person shall not escape liability to such person for the resulting damages or injury. Or something that tweaks the language that allows us to try and resolve the question of who's responsible.
I mean, that would help, and I think it would also need to something like, if it's found, the damages, the responsibility of, because if it was a tree, if it was a tree, then that's the city's damage, but meanwhile, your homeowners insurance has taken a hit to defend you, and now your insurance might go up, so.
Will the council allow us to sort of work on tweaking the language? And we'll, we'll bring it back.
I would be more comfortable with that. I mean, that's, because, because I see what we're trying to do, but I would like us to be clear to what, what the responsibility really is. Thank you for considering that. I would be open to my colleagues on this one.
I think that just cleared off the panel of all the other questioners, if we're going to bring this back.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So Councilmember Andrews.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the grant hardship program, and wanted to know if we could partner with the USDA Section 504 Home Repair Program, if that's something that we can look at, and if we could also look at possibly Safe Streets. I know that there's a lot of projects that are in the CIP for Safe Streets, and seeing if we can carve out some funding out of that program, given it's technically streets, where it doesn't hit the general fund.
We can certainly bring this back with that analysis. A hardship program does not need to be part of the ordinance itself, that's something that you could develop separately.
Okay.
And so we can, I'm not familiar with the USDA program, I can certainly look into that, and when we bring this back, it can have more information for you.
Okay, great. I think I'm fine with, with Councilmember Roach is, or Mayor Pro Tim Roach is proposing and bringing it back. Is it possible we can have that analysis when you bring that back of the program? I know that's a separate conversation, but it'd be nice to, I don't want to take up too much staff time, I just want to see if you can, if I can get an hour in looking at how much money we could take out of CIP to do it versus, and also connecting with those other programs.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this report. I also support bringing it back with more clarified language. But to Councilmember Andrews' point, I'm also interested in the hardship program. You know, if the city attorney said, you know, we're cashing out hundreds of thousands of dollars in these lawsuits because things are unclear, maybe there's a way that we can take some of the savings from not having to do these lawsuits, because liability is more clear, and refunnel that money, or, you know, reprogram that money to this hardship program. Because I do completely agree with Councilmember Roach as well. I don't think that there's clarity around this. So I do think, to Councilmember Cyrup's point, we do need to have, you know, a full communications campaign around this. This might be clear to the city attorney's office and to City Hall, but I can guarantee you, it is not clear to the average homeowner at Hayward. And to get hit with an expense like this, it, it can really, you know, destroy anybody. And we already know that we live in a community where people are living paycheck to paycheck, so, you know, a $5,000 unplanned expense could, could be significant. And I'm also wondering how we improve communication with the neighborhoods, because if, if I'm already financially struggling, and I happen to find a way to go and repair my sidewalk, and then the city comes in a year later and repairs all of my neighbor's sidewalks for free, because that was on their strategic plan or their CIP, that also would not sit well with me as a resident. So maybe there's a way of us looking at, you know, how do we communicate to neighborhoods well in advance of us rolling out, you know, sidewalk repairs, so that they can make whatever plans they need to make to either repair it themselves, or wait for the city to come through, and make that risk trade-off decision on their own? And then, yeah, because I was also wondering, like, isn't there money in the CIP for sidewalks? And there is, but just not enough to fix all of the sidewalks all at once, so that's why there's the shared thing. But I'm just, I'm also very concerned about the shifting, and I guess it's not shifting the liability, because the liability is already shared. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're communicating this clearly, and that there's hardship programs for people to access, should they need them, and a place for people to call and get their questions addressed related to this. Thank you.
Thank you. So it will come back with further analysis and information. Do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. So I will close this item, I'll move on to council reports and announcements.
Mayor Salinas.
Oh, yes.
My apologies. Did you open public comment? I think you need to--
I believe so.
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's a ledge business item.
I did not do public comment, I apologize. So, what was that? Oh, so I'll move on to public comment. I don't have any public comment cards, I don't see anybody online. Oh, I do have a public comment. Come on, come on up and hit the button, and then when you're done, fill out a card, and then-- Hit the button and, and give us your name, and where you live, and--
Hi, my name is Colleen Gordon. It's not about the specific ordinance, it's more about the meeting as a whole, if that's okay. I have one piece of feedback for you guys. The previous motion, you used CPI as an acronym, this one you used CIP. It's taken me most of the meeting to figure out what they are, contribution per individual and city improvement plan, but as a member of the public who's attending the meeting, when you speak in acronyms, it's hard to understand things. You don't need to use it every time you use the acronym, but if, when you introduce it, you could use it, that'd be really helpful. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, sometimes we get-- Yes, so-- So can we clarify, Mr. City Attorney, what CPI means and what CIP means?
So I do want to make a correction there. CPI is the Consumer Price Index, which applies to different metropolitan areas, and CIP is our capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the comment. Okay, so I will close public comment, return to the dais. We have, you have what you need, so I will, there will be no action taken on this item. So I will close this item, move on to council reports and announcements, and-- Councilmember Andrews, since--
Yes, I want to thank everyone who put on the Mariachi Festival of Southland Mall. Thank, thank you to Southland Mall, Hart, Mariachi Festival, anyone that was involved in that, it was a great event. I also want to give kudos to Brick by Brick Toys for putting on the first annual Stack City BrickCon Lego demonstration and event. I know that I saw Assistant City Manager Barry Thomas out there. It was a great event, it was Saturday and Sunday at Chabot College. It was, I believe, between 1,500 to 2,000 people who showed up for their first event, which is very impressive. And then I also wanted to thank the DHIA and the Economic Development Department on the light installation at the movie theater. There's a lot of people coming out there, taking selfies, so doing the things that we've been wanting to do at the city for a very long time, and creating those points of interest, so I wanted to thank them for that. And then I did want to mention that there was a lot of good feedback we received from the merchants on Tennessean Corridor, on the Tennessean tour by the Economic Development Department, and I think we can do some partnership there. I know there was a lot of comments from the vendors, about the street vendors from the restaurants, so I do think we can do more events on that side of town to bring more businesses to the restaurants that are there. So I'm hoping that some of our community partners can get together to bring more support on that side of town. And again, thank you to the, to the Economic Development Team for coordinating that tour, and I look forward to more tours throughout the city to hear about some of the issues that we're seeing around town. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Roach.
Thank you, yeah, I wanted to add, over the weekend, I went to a dedication for new building at Moro Catholic High School, but I didn't realize in doing that, it was actually celebrating their 60th anniversary, and I just thought, they've been such a significant part of the city, I thought it was worth congratulating Moro Catholic High School on their 60th anniversary, and of dedicating their beautiful new performing arts center. Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilmember Cyrup.
Thank you. Just echoing Councilmember Andrews' comments around activating South Hayward. This Thursday, October 9th, is the last South Hayward Market of the season, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I just want to give a huge shout out to Eden Youth for holding down and running the South Hayward Market this year. I think there were several, and this is the last, so if you haven't gone yet, please do go. And then the last thing I wanted to note, and maybe Interim City Manager Adelman, you want to speak to this, I found out recently that our Hayward Main Library and Weeks Branch Library are officially clean air centers. Did you want to talk about that a little bit, or was it announced earlier? I think it's a cool accomplishment.
Well, we are in the process of becoming--
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, someone from Bay Area Air District that I know reached out and, you know, gave a shout out to some of our environmental staff, and so--
Yeah, well, it's, it's possible, they've reached that, but I know we were getting the filters and everything. Our downtown library already has the level of filters needed. For, for weeks, we were buying the filters needed to make it a clean air center.
Gotcha, and just in an effort to de-jargonize, a clean air center is categorized as a building that is a safe breathing environment during poor air quality events such as wildfires. And so the goal here is to make our libraries into those clean air centers in case of emergency. I'll wait for the official announcement from the city, sorry, to steal your thunder, I just wanted to make sure--
No, that's okay, I had actually started working on it before I moved to City Hall, and I'm hoping I can make an announcement soon.
Thank you for your work on this, too.
Well, thank you, yeah.
Thank you. I don't see any, I don't see any other public comment, so I will move on to, I will move on to the council referrals, there are no referrals, and our next meeting will be October 21st, 2025, at 7:00 p.m.
Oh, Mayor, can I make one more announcement really quick, before you hit the gal?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we were going to meet so far in the future, so I also just wanted to give a shout out to the Hayward Night Market, which will be on Saturday, October 18th, at St. Rose Hospital, the mayor's favorite hospital, from 4:00 to 9:30 p.m. So I hope to see folks there, too. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
No, I, I would be remiss if I did not do this. So tonight, we are adjourning in the, in the memory of a very longtime Hayward attorney, a very, very longtime Hayward Rotarian, and I believe, Councilmember Zermeño, that Mr. Martins, I believe, was the first Chabot Las Placitas Community College trustee for this district, for our, for our, for our area. Yes, and he was also a Rotary President. And I met, well, let me, I'll first want to read the statement here, and, because this truly is, you know, this is a big loss, but he was 97 years old, and he just lived a full life, a very generous life, and, and so here, I'll, let me read this. Edward Martins, a longtime Hayward resident and respected attorney, passed away on September 11th, 2025, at the age of 97. Edward practiced law in Hayward since 1953, and his commitment to the city was deep. He and his wife Donna established the Donna L. and Edward E. Martins Foundation in 1970, and through, and through it, supported many local institutions, including Hayward Public Library, Chabot College, and the UCSF Medical Center. Mr. Martins was an avid reader and a strong supporter of literacy and education for Hayward's youth, and he helped launch the library's mobile outreach program with the Bookmobile Kirby, and the more recent Tech Mobile, a mobile tech, and the more recent mobile tech, the technology outreach vehicle. He regularly sponsored many programs for children and teens. Mr. Martins, Mr. Martins was a founding trustee, as well as the longest-serving trustee at the Chabot College, at the Chabot College Las Placitas Community College District, and he funded many scholarships for students and awards for the, for faculty. The Chabot Col, the Chabot College was recently redeemed and renamed, the Chabot College Library was recently renamed in honor of him and his wife Donna, in acknowledgement of the largest single donation to their foundation, $5 million. Edward Martins will be missed, but his legacy will live on through the many people and institutions that he helped. I met Mr. Martins, just, I don't know if Councilmember Zermeño wants to say anything, but I met Mr. Martins about 12 years ago, and we, I, you know, I'm also the chair of the Chabot, the Friends of Chabot College Foundation, and I met Mr. Martins about 12 years ago, and twice a year, Mr. Martins and I would have lunch. We'd meet over here at Chef's Experience, and we would have lunch, and of course, accompanying us would be the, the-- us would be the, the Executive Director, Yvonne Wu-Craig. And, and, you know, he, we talked about the city, he, you know, he was an attorney, so, you know, he, he was, you know, he was an avid reader, we talked about the history of the city, we talked about the history of Alameda County, we talked about the history of the region. But one of the things that I really enjoyed about his, about his discussions and our time spent at lunch, was just his, his insight on all things local government. This guy read every agenda, every minute, every packet for every local agency in the area. He knew everything that was going on in the city council for Los, the Chabot-Las Placitas Community College, the BART Board. I mean, he knew all the special districts, I mean, he read the agendas, he read the minutes, and, and we always had lots to talk about. But I think the one thing that I really enjoyed talking to him about was assisting him in planning how he was going to give to the city of Hayward and to Chabot College. And, you know, the, you know, Kirby and Moby, these were, you know, if it weren't for Edward Martins, you know, I don't know what would have happened to these programs, or if these programs would have even been launched, but it was Mr. Martins and his wife Donna who really provided the seed money for these two instrumental programs that have delivered literacy and technology to neighborhoods. But he also financed, and, you know, when he, when he came to the foundation, he, he talked about leaving a legacy at Chabot College. And that's when we arranged the, upon his, upon his, you know, his leave in us, he was going to bequeath the Chabot College the largest gift in the history of Chabot College, which was a $5 million gift that would be put into a trust that would, in perpetuity, finance scholarships for students, in perpetuity. That money will be in this trust forever, and stu, I mean, think about, you know, I think about all the students that come through Chabot College, it is the Martins Scholarship that will be financing a lot of those students, in all majors and all transfers, whether you're going to, you know, a four-year university, or a college/university, or you're gonna go into a trade, the Martin Scholarship will finance that. So his legacy is, is not, he not only made a big impact here currently, today, but his legacy in the future is absolutely outstanding, and it will carry on for a long time. But I know Councilmember Zermeño is the president of the Hayward Rotary today, and I know he was the president of Rotary. Councilmember Zermeño.
Thank you, Mayor, those are great words. I did meet Mr. Martins once, very positive, very jovial, great, great person, and in that one-hour meeting, we connected because of education and because of the Rotary project. And as a matter of fact, he kind of promised that he would help us include some wiring in where, in our Masonic Hall where we meet, so our IT will be a little bit better served. So that was really good. Very small project, but he was very happy to say, you got me, no problem at all whatsoever. And of course, the fact that it's education was his middle name, I think that's tremendous. From going to an attorney to somebody so instrumental at Chabot College, that really is exemplary, and he was. So he is being missed, and I'm sure he and his wife are up in heaven looking over us, especially today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, would you like to say a few words about him?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, Edward Martins and I became really, really friendly, and it all started with Kirby. I love to tell the story of how, when the library was being built, and it was, you know, there were all this construction going on, and I get this call from someone, and I didn't know him, you know, I didn't know who this was, and he said, you know, can I come and talk to you? And I said, sure, I mean, why not? And he came, and I, of course, I didn't know a thing about him, and I was giving him a tour of the building, and he was really panting, he was obviously quite old even then, and so I said, oh, let's sit down, and we sat down, and I started talking, and he said, oh, what do you do with donations? And I was like, oh, you know, if you give me $5 or $10, we'll put it in a pot, if you give us $25, we can buy a book and put your name in it, if you give us $100, and so it was just, and then I don't know what, because at that time, when we were building the downtown library, people would keep saying from South Hayward, what about us? You'll have this beautiful library in downtown. And coming from Monry County, which is largely rural, where we really depended on bookmobiles, so I said to him, well, you know, if you give us $250,000, I'll buy a bookmobile. And he said, done, right there and then. So it was just the most amazing experience, but after that, it was always like that. And he'd say to me, you know, I hate talking to you, because you always have ideas for how I can spend money. But he was always willing and really believed, and I just wanted to say also, he and his wife had moved out of Hayward many years ago, they lived in Danville, but his commitment to Hayward was complete, that he really wanted Hayward youth to do well. So, yeah, he was just an amazing person, and definitely will be missed.
Absolutely. So with all of that said, in honor of, in honor and in memory of Mr. Martins, this meeting is adjourned.